Okay, I'm gonna call the council meeting for November 5th. Please rise from invocation by our mayor followed by the pledge of allegiance to the flag.
Once again, we are graced to meet in this place for the purposes of discussing the business pertinent to the borough of Pottstown. And we would ask that we would receive divine direction and supernatural intuition that we would have balance in all things to represent and to affect the common good. Amen.
Amen.
The United States of America, in its very motherhood which stands our nation under God, infinible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, before we go into subcommittee reports, I'm gonna move the Pottstown Police Department Life Saving Awards to next.
Okay, before Chief Drumheller comes up, I'd just like to recap a recent conversation that I had with Captain Thomas, and it was an inquiry that I made about police officers delivering babies, actually. And I did not find that there was a recent history of that because of the efficiency of 911. But the efficiency of 911 did not meet the standard in these life-saving awards where our officers were able to go beyond, above and beyond the call of duty, and actually perform life-saving and resuscitating activities on several members of our community. So although there's no recent record of births by police officers, we do have several individuals whose lives have been saved as a result of the stellar performance of the Pottstown Police Department. And Chief Drumheller, would you like to come forward?
Good evening, Council. Tonight, I'm bringing forth four police officers for awards for life-saving merit. I offer to you that in a police career that's surrounded by tragedy and things that we generally don't necessarily want to see, but we do, and we do on a regular basis and we do in a professional manner, there is one thing that you will take in your career and remember for the rest of your career, is the moment that you interceded and saved someone's life. And tonight, we get to honor four Pottstown police officers for their life-saving efforts. I'd like to call the first three forward, please. Officer Nick Stolpous, Officer Anthony Fisher, and Officer Steve Morrissey. Please, the mayor, please.
On August 13th, 2014, Officer Morrissey was on patrol when he came upon a vehicle stopped on the front lawn of 964 Jackson Street. The vehicle left the roadway and came to rest across the sidewalks. Further investigation revealed that the operator of the vehicle, 47 years of age, was suffering from an apparent seizure. Officer Morrissey requested an ambulance respond to the scene, at which point the operator of the vehicle became unresponsive. Officer Morrissey removed the man from the vehicle and found that he was no longer breathing and did not have a pulse. Officer Morrissey immediately began to administer CPR. Officer Morrissey was assisted at the scene by Officers Stolpous and Fisher to perform chest compressions and rescue breathing. Officers continued CPR until ambulance personnel arrived. The vehicle's operator's pulse returned, and he began breathing on his own. He was then transported to Ready Hospital for further treatment. Officer Stolpous's assistance in performing CPR led to the successful resuscitation of the vehicle operator, giving him the opportunity to receive more advanced care. Thank you.
What I'd like to do forever now, you'll wear a ribbon on your uniform that indicates that you saved a life. Congratulations. And the reason I bring Corporal Weitzel's attention to you is, as I told you earlier, saving a life is eminently important to police. Saving a child's life is ultra, ultra-important to police. And he saved the life of a four-year-old by giving him CPR. Corporal Weitzel, please come forward.
On June 15th, 2014, Corporal Weitzel responded to 206 Van Attony Street for a report of an unresponsive four-year-old. Upon arrival, Corporal Weitzel was the first officer in and located the unresponsive four-year-old child. Her lips were blue and her body was limp. Without hesitation, Corporal Weitzel began CPR. At the completion of the first cycle, the child was still not breathing. A second cycle of CPR was begun by Corporal Weitzel. After completing the second round of CPR, Corporal Weitzel checked for her pulse and detected that the four-year-old child had a light pulse and was beginning to breathe. The four-year-old girl was carried out to awaiting ambulance and transported to PMMC, where she survived the incident. Due to the swift actions of Corporal Weitzel, a four-year-old girl was saved and is alive and doing well.
Now, you can tell me the pressure he was under with a child like that, thinking about that and being a father, and it's an excellent job. Thank you. Thank you, Council.
Thank you very much, Chief, and thank you, officers, for doing a great job. Okay, we're gonna get into the subcommittee reports. Infrastructure, Counselor Koff.
Public safety, Counselor Gary.
We will meet Monday at 6:00.
Okay, economic development. Tompkins Insurance opened up there at the right side of the parking shop. Anything, Erica, you wanna add to that?
Yes, I did. I just wanted to mention the fall issue of momentum did go out, and that included two significant projects, one of which was Tompkins Vista, 258 East High Street. They recently had their open house on Monday, so they have their doors open, and now will be serving insurance customers, and future will open up the banking operation there. In addition, Hagerty Steel, the circle of progress, recently finished their construction of a 9,000-square-foot steel fabrication facility. So those are two projects that have been finished, and we're pleased to have that done. So please continue to share momentum. We have the momentum newsletter available. You can actually e-subscribe that on Kay's website. So those are a couple of things we'd like to share.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any questions? Transportation, Counselor Koff.
That's coming up, December, December.
Just an update on the airport.
Sure. While we have our meeting in December, the runway construction project is moving along. The runway has been milled, the crack repair is going on, and it'll be paved soon, and we're hoping for, everything is closed at the airport right now, so we're on track to have that finished by November 20th.
Okay, Ricketts Community Center, Counselor Kirkland.
Yes, there's the report in your packet.
Okay. Pottstown School Board, Mr. Williams.
Hi, Nelson. Just spent this afternoon over at Rupert, and this time, I'm pleased to say that our students will be transferring over on Monday morning, the beginning of a new marking period. Those facilities are absolutely incredible, and I'd like to invite those of you who can, tomorrow morning at 9:30, we're going to do a walk-through of the school and point out the new facilities to you folks if you would. Invitation is open, and if you would meet us at the front door, we'd like to see you. That's it.
Any questions for Mr. Williams? Okay, thank you. All right, up to the ad hoc zoning and animal, Counselor Miller.
I'll start with the animal. A special thank you goes out to Committee Member Brett Wagner for his innovative idea and taking the necessary steps to construct a sound barrier between the outdoor kennels and the very loud sounds generated from the blowers located next to the building in an effort to reduce stress and anxiety of the animals during their temporary stay there. In September, the committee discussed the need for help at the kennels located at the sewer treatment plant with cleaning, cleaning the kennels, exercising the dogs, feeding, watering, socializing, and I've added laundering of donated towels and blankets because that's up and coming. The committee agreed that qualified volunteers would be a helpful solution. Janice Lee confirmed with the borough's liability insurance carrier on September 3rd that volunteers do not affect liability, however, they do not receive workers' compensation coverage. So as such, volunteers would need, would be asked to fill out an application as well as sign a disclaimer, holding the borough harmless for any liability related to any injury sustained as a result of any activity occurring while volunteering at the kennel. I brought two sample volunteer applications from local area shelter programs and a sample disclaimer for solicitor's review and for the creation of an application disclaimer that would be appropriate for volunteering at the borough kennel. And we're asking for the support of Borough Council to approve the use of qualified community And our next committee meeting is Wednesday, November 19.
Yeah, on that meeting date, it's at 8:30, and both Janice and I have police pension at 9:00. So I don't know if you wanna, and I use the last two hours of police pension, so either be without us or have it on.
Try to reschedule.
Contact Attorney Scher, Counselor Koff, if you can reschedule.
Sure.
Any questions? Okay, bicentennial, Counselor Koff.
Yes, we've made significant progress. We've had, we have put dates up for different, we're gonna have bands in the park, we're gonna have different things going on. Everything's not really in stone yet, but it's coming along very well, and I think, and I think it's gonna turn out to be very nice.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? One of the things I think we can add to that is hopefully we'll have a borough garage ribbon-cutting during the bicentennial year, so hopefully that will be added to it sometime in September, October. Okay, up to number six, the handicap parking space, 7 West 4th Street, appeal of denial. I'm gonna turn this over to our solicitor.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Perry, if you could come forward and, you can sit at the front table, if that's okay?
I need my daughter to tell you the words, I can't remember.
Well, that's okay. Just, just to give Council a little background so everyone understands the process this evening, under the Borough Master Traffic Ordinance, there is a ordinance that dictates the establishment and process for handicapped parking spaces. And the ordinance has been in place probably since the mid-'90s, and it has, I think, served the borough pretty well over that time. But there is a process whereby if someone applies for a handicap parking space, it's reviewed by a committee consisting of the Chief of Police, the Traffic Safety Sergeant, the manager, and a member of Borough Council. And when we receive requests for the parking spaces, the committee will make a determination, and the ordinance does provide for appeal rights if the individual that's seeking the handicap parking space did not get the parking space approved. And under the ordinance, Borough Council then serves as the board to hear the appeal. So that's what brings us here this evening. Mrs. Perry, I guess, resides at 7 West 4th Street, and she had requested a handicap parking space, and the request was turned down. And Mrs. Perry, it's your opportunity, or your daughter's opportunity, to give Council information as to why you feel you need that space, and anything else you want to tell Borough Council. Now's your time, okay?
Okay. My daughter's gonna tell me what's wrong with my back. She has all the big words.
Since 2009, she's had three, 400 injections, manipulation. She has stenosis of the spine, she has osteoporosis, she has stenosis of the lower part of her spinal column. She sees the doctor, gets injections, she cannot move when these injections are done. She can't drive the car when these are done, she can barely drive some days, and she needs parking space that will allow her to not have to park seven, eight cars down the road.
Ma'am, could we have your name for the record, please?
Oh, Martha Mitchnuck. I'm her daughter.
Thank you.
Now, can I say something?
No, you can say something.
I can say something. I lived there 43 years, never asked much out of Pottstown. I paid my taxes every time. And these other two people, just because they got there first, it doesn't seem fair that I have to be neglected. And that's what it seems like, I'm being neglected 'cause I can't have a parking space.
We do have two other handicap parking spaces.
Yeah, that's why they refused it, 'cause there's two other down the street. But I can't understand why they should get it and I shouldn't. For a long time, I had, I had neighbors that were very nice about the thing, and they'd say, "Don't park there, that's Martha's parking space." Well, now I got new neighbors that have no thought of anything, but just take what they can and do it. And if they park regularly and pull up to the next car and the next car could fit. 4th Street, the commodity of parking at that place is horrible. There's two apartment buildings on the corners over there, and so that makes extra cars. And I just don't feel like I should have to go back when I didn't do anything wrong the first question, to come back to get, come to a meeting like this and have to ask again. It seems like I'm getting punished, and I didn't do anything to not get it in the first place.
Well, just so you know, ma'am, you're not getting punished, it's just a process that the ordinance has, so...
I understand process, but I also understand the fact that after 43 years and paying my taxes regularly in that building and taking care, if you'd see, I take care of everything I can when I can walk, 'cause the lazy people don't clean up nothing out front, and I help make sure it's all cleaned up, and nobody ever does. And so I don't see why it's fair that I should be able to, have to be without a place.
Because she's obstinate in doing these things, she doesn't move too many days after lunch. So...
When you said...
Because their grass isn't clean.
When you said Friday cleanup, I clean up.
On Saturday, we didn't move. But do you understand that she really does, 'cause it's hard to take groceries and things like that if you're eight, 10 cars down the road when you're moving. She cannot carry a bag that has more than a half a gallon of milk in it.
It's just, I mean, I have all the stenoses and all that other stuff, but I don't think it's fair that I should have to wait. I mean, it's a dirty rotten shame.
I provided Council a copy of the ordinance with the criteria. Ma'am, is, do you have any off-street parking available to you?
My husband parks back there, but I can't park back there anyway. It's a long walk.
Is that back in the alley?
Yeah. My property is 75 feet long, so that means I have to walk 75 feet from the car to get, like, carry a bag, carry a bag, carry a bag, which is, if it's at my house, I can put it on the porch, and I can get up on the porch, and then I can put them into the house. It's not feasible for me to park back there because it's, it doesn't work. And I'd really like to have it before winter comes because I don't know how I'll make it in the wintertime.
Counselor Miller, this is your award. Anything you would want to comment or speak on?
Yeah, I'm actually really glad this came before this appeal because it gives the entire Council an opportunity to, to maybe set some criteria or a method of establishing handicap parking. I understand, Chuck said that this has been in effect since 1996, and we haven't had any issues with it prior to. I agree, parking on the numbered streets, particularly 4th Street, is, it's very crowded, it's very congested.
It's stupid, nobody parks where they're supposed to. You have, you can put a half a car between each one. Move your car back so I can put my whole car there, but give me mine in front of my house so I can go.
All right, and then, and then I was very worried to, again, we have handicap parking spaces blocked off 17 and 19. We have one at 12 East. The one on the corner, the apartment that you're referring to, at 14 East, is also a handicapped individual, and he has not yet applied for a parking space, but under the guidelines, he realistically can. And so I would like to see if he can...
Is that Bob? Yeah. He needs, 'cause he can't...
And a lot of the citizens on 4th Street have been there since, well, put it this way, I'm 197, and I've been there since I was a little kid.
Yeah, my one neighbor across the street, she's been there, and the houses are 100 years old, and I was half there, but 47, 44 years I've been there.
It wasn't a means of punishment, I just thought this was a good opportunity that, particularly when we're looking at the numbered streets, is there something we can do as a group to establish some kind of method or criteria? Because what we don't want to do is get into a pattern of restricting parking on entire public blocks. And, and that is potentially starting to happen in this small area.
Because we're the ones that stay longer.
Yeah, that's it.
Other, other people move in, they come to Philadelphia, wreck the place, and move out. Or else we have, have to see landlords that don't do nothing. I'm taking care of my place.
Counselor Kirkland, you had a comment. The two existing handicapped spots, are they on the same side of the road?
The back-to-back 17 and 19, yes, are on the same...
Same side of the road, same block.
Same house next to each other.
And I do think Council's aware, the creation of a handicap space, wherever it is, allows any person...
Any handicap person.
Any handicap person.
But can you see me walking all the way down there?
No, no, I understand, ma'am, I'm not saying that, I'm just letting anyone know that spaces that are designated as those spaces are not particular to any one person, that anyone has the right, that has the appropriate placard to park there. So although Mrs. Perry may get the space approved, it doesn't, not necessarily just for her, anybody can park there that's permitted to.
The mean average age during 4th Street is about 64.
Yeah, I'm gathering that.
Either that or crazy kids that come in and scream all night.
So, so you can see where, where we could get into a pattern of...
I understand, but I also...
...block restricted for the handicap.
I also understand that I'm...
Was that the reason for denial, because of the other parking spaces? Or was...
The close proximity of, the close proximity of the other handicap spaces, and to bring it before the entire Council so that we had the opportunity to set some kind of method in place.
One of the other requirements, though, too, is, are stipulations that there's off-street parking.
Right.
And there is off-street parking regardless whether it's 75 feet or 10 feet.
Well, that would be like three more parking spaces down the street.
Was that, ma'am?
That would be like three more parking spaces down the street.
I'm just saying as part of the criteria, as far as why it was denied, if there's...
Is that why it was denied, 'cause we have...
One of the reasons, it was because of off-street parking.
Well, except I'll note that the ordinance reads, if there, it shall not be provided if there's reasonably accessible and practicable off-street parking. And I think, given her statement about the length and distance, I, I don't think that's a prohibition in this case.
And it's also on the alley, and the alley is not nicely neatly paved, it is deep ruts and dark, and very dark.
You stated it's a 75-foot walk to the parking in the alley.
My property, that's how big the properties are, if you, you know, and...
How long is the walk from the front door to the space?
Oh, there would be my front steps, four, four steps up and my door.
Okay.
'Cause my, my, my porch is on the sidewalk. Anybody asks me where I live, my porch is on the sidewalk. You'll find my house, 'cause the porch, there's two of them right on the sidewalk. And then there's a tree or somewhere, they always put these crazy trees in the same spot so you can't get through. But my house is like that close. That would be my front steps, which is not more nice than going all the way 75 feet.
One of the other processes, too, is that after the parking enforcement looks at the situation, then it goes, he makes a recommendation. Then it goes before the counselor, and counselor then either agrees or disagrees with his interpretation. So then it, you know, at that point, I mean, the counselor can override what the police officer has done, correct?
Yeah, I think it's shared the committee.
So at that point, when vote denied, then it comes before us for appeal, and that's why it's here at this point.
And the only reason for denial is because of the potential off-street parking in the back? Well, that and the other handicap spots. It's already a block.
There must be farther than 75 feet, even though they're accessible, they're available, but they're greater than 75 feet, which is a hardship for you.
Yes, it is.
I mean, the other ones...
Only reason I know that, I had to put a fence up, and I have a house with that big, and the property is 75 feet, and I have a shed, so that's how much space I got. So you gotta walk all that.
But are the other spaces that are available a greater distance?
The same distance, that would be the same distance.
They're the same distance?
They're about...
So in, in the event that, say, there, there were a situation where you got a space and then somebody else with a placard parked in it, are you the principal driver, or do you do most of the...
In my parking space, I'm the principal.
I live in Florida.
Oh, you live in Florida, okay. So you're driving yourself?
Yes, my husband parks in the hanic, in the one out back, but I, I'm principal for mine. If you want to see all the papers, I, I did everything they told me to.
Okay.
Got that car put in my name, and that, that cost money, I have it changed from my husband's name to my name, and all that stuff, I did all that stuff.
And she got a cute little tiny wheelchair on the back of her license plate.
Yeah, I mean, I had to pay, what, $100 and some dollars to take it to the Justice of Peace to get it changed into my name, 'cause the name was in his name. And it has to be in my name to get a handicap in my name. And so it's, I did all that stuff, and I, I mean, I've done all the things you've asked for. Then I got refused.
In the event that somebody would, somebody else with a handicap space was parked in that space when you came...
I understand that, yeah.
What, then, then what would happen?
Do you get someone to...
Park in the middle of the street?
I mean, that's, that's a realistic question.
I know. Park in the middle of the street till Tom comes along and parks it for me.
It's a realistic question, but it's irrelevant to the determination that we're asked to make.
It's a truth, yes, it's true, but...
I'm just asking it because of point number 12.
Yeah, I understand, somebody else can park in my space.
So the relevancy is linked to the ordinance statement.
But, but that's not, that's not a consideration for whether it should be granted or not.
That's my question, that's all.
It means just stand in the middle of the street and yell and tell everybody, "Move my car for me."
Well, that would make, impose, as us as...
'Cause I, I had a neighbor, he did all those things for me. If anybody parked in my space, he'd say, "Don't park there," and it'd get snotty about the whole thing. He'd park my car, and I'd be standing out in front of my house. 'Cause he was, that young man was great, but he moved. I don't have him anymore. And that's why I never asked for one before this. I've been going through this for 10 years.
Monday, is it Monday evening we would make the vote of determination?
Correct.
Well, as far as I'm concerned, whatever Counselor Miller's suggestion would be, I'm gonna support. Certainly Counselor Miller knows her award better than any of us as far as parking and so forth at that point. Each of you may decide and do what, you know, you feel and so forth as far as our vote Monday evening.
Is this existing handicap spot directly in front of her house?
Yes.
Not the existing?
It's not existing.
She wants to get one.
Right, but the existing, how far away from her house is the existing?
There are 17 and 19 West and...
And I'm at 7.
7 West.
And these are houses that are spaces between, not too much, like double houses locked on.
So 17 and 19, they're right next to each other?
They're back-to-back, yep.
They're probably the only single houses down, so the other ones are double.
No, well, they're actually, 17, 19, and 21 are adjoining, 7 and 9 are adjoining, 11 and 13 are adjoining.
7 and 9 are joining, 'cause I'm part of next door.
7, 9, 11, and 13, and 17, 19, and 21. They're all adjoining copies.
And those spots are still necessary, that existing handicap? I have a...
Yes, yes, actually, we, the one was done in March and the other one in 2007, and I did confirm with Corporal McClancy that the one at 19 that was completed in 2007, the person is still residing there and still handicapped that.
From our ordinance and from what I've heard, I don't know, understand the...
From our ordinance and from what I've heard, I don't understand the relevance of how many other spaces, handicap spaces there are. Is there some judgment we should make?
Under the current ordinance?
Right.
No, but I thought that that would be a catalyst for us to kind of make a method separate from this decision. This is just an opportunity to maybe look a little further at what our ordinances are.
Well, certainly I have no problem having the safety and looking into it, so...
Daniel, you look confused. I'm sorry.
Vice President, you're... I don't understand, you know, supposing everyone on the block were handicapped.
Right. Well, you're talking about, you're talking about a public street. Now, that would eliminate parking for visitors. That would eliminate parking for anybody else if you were not handicapped.
But theoretically, we could have an entire block handicapped because there's a need.
I guess under your current ordinance, that could possibly be done. I could see that being a little problematic, which is why it would be good to take a look at.
I think, I think the implication is maybe the safety committee could just look at the ordinance, see if we could fine-tune it, come up with some other criteria that might be relevant now that it's been around since 1996, and see if we can fine-tune it to make it better. I mean, I think that's really the suggestion that's coming...
That's for the future, but that's...
Absolutely. It's not for this case, but for the future, it might not be a bad idea to take a look at it and see what we can do with it.
Any other comments from the front?
The only other thing is if we could have Corporal McClancy revisit it to see, you know, if he has any re-change of thoughts on it and so forth.
I understand.
I talked to him about it today.
Our policy is, is we approved it because she fit the criteria to be approved. So that's what, we don't get involved. I mean, if you think about it, there's a couple blocks in the borough that already have six on them. So we approved it based on the criteria. But I can have him take a look at it again if that's your request.
No, I didn't realize. I thought he had turned it down. I'm sorry.
No, he did not.
Okay.
It'll be Monday, listed for Monday night.
The FBO, we are sharing an interim lease agreement. That interim lease agreement has given us a good amount of time to evaluate the performance of the FBO. And thus far, everything's going very well under the circumstances that we have. We are looking at a, I refer to it as a long-term lease agreement, but really, we're looking at a one-year with a few options. We're still sorting out a few details and working with our airport consultant on updating the actual agreement, to update the standards with the FAA and some other things. But generally, we've come to a good set of criteria with the FBO Flyle LLC. Now, when I referred to them a few months ago, it was under Fair Share Limited, and Fair Share was the previous business. So they actually created a new LLC for the flight school. And tonight with me, James Roulier, he's the manager for Flyle, and he's had some time to really get into the office and get used to things, been at all of our construction meetings. So I wanted to introduce him to you this evening. James, I'm going to say hello to council.
I'm James. Just wanted to thank everybody. One, like giving us a shot at it. Two, I would also invite everybody out. We're really excited. We're going to try hopefully enough to disappoint everybody. And I would really, truly invite everybody to come out. Hopefully we're going to have a grand opening at some point here soon, if the snow doesn't destroy us first. If so, we'll have it in springtime. And we really want to open everything to the community to kind of bring everybody out. Aviation's kind of a dying breed. So the more young folks we can get involved with it, the better. And hopefully be a good part of the community.
Do you want to speak to the scope of services real quick, including the flight school? There's a number of other business activities that you're interested in doing that you're kind of working on.
Right now, we solidified a full agreement with U-Haul. U-Haul will be displaying trucks and they'll be available for rental seven days a week, basically 24 hours a day. Hertz, the rental car corporation, is very excited. They have also signed a long-term agreement with us. So car rentals, seven days a week, 24 hours a day. Not only that, we have the flight school. We have an aerial photography company. We also, we'll also be bringing Charter available to everybody, whether it's large airplanes, small airplanes. We'd like to have an option available for everybody. And then generally speaking, once we have all of our airplanes there, every one of my employees will always be available to take anybody on tour, kids, adults, doesn't really matter. And right now, we have limited hours with the idea of as we get open again, get the name out there, we'll be open for a lot more hours. We'd like to be at some point open anytime a customer wants. So that's kind of the thoughts moving forward. And it's really nice just to hear the excitement from Hertz, to hear from U-Haul and some other people that were involved in the process. So again, I wanted to thank everybody.
Good, thank you.
All right. Do you have any questions with regard to the contract leasing?
That will be listed for Monday evening. Okay, number eight, rental ordinance amendment.
Yes, it's been a number of years since we've looked at the components of the rental ordinance as well as some of the building codes. Been working with the Department of Licensing and Inspections to make sure that everything's up to date and up to snuff. Don't want to let these go 25 years like the handicap parking ordinance. As far as substance, there are really no substantive changes with the exception of one. The proposal, the proposed ordinance would basically require the inspection of all rental units on an annual basis. Right now, the way it's done is it's done on a change of occupancy, but it's also a five-year rotation. And we anticipate with additional manpower that the annual inspection can occur, which I think will be better for our housing stock. So in working on these, we'll probably be ready for your approval at the December meeting. Again, except for the change in the frequency of inspection, everything else is kind of fine-tuned and cleaned up. So there'll be a number of amendments, but primarily, that's just what's being proposed. So if there's any questions, be happy to try and answer them. And hopefully be ready for the end of the year to kick into beginning of January 2015.
Any questions?
Just as for council's edification, also, the 2015 licensing inspections budget has been built with the concept that we will doing the once-a-year inspections moving forward.
Okay, we're up to number nine, public works facility bid awards.
You have, should have had in your packet or on your electronic disseminated documents, a bid tab for the new public works facility. ER Steubner Incorporated was the low bidder at $4,074,000. Staff recommends that the bid be awarded to Steubner for the purpose of constructing the new public works facility.
Any questions?
The only thing I'd like to raise, we've heard a lot of bad publicity about the buildings for the school. And will we have something in the contract so that this is a not-to-exceed?
Well, the contract will be based on that, Mr. Wean. Certainly, I can, I can say to you that the concern about Steubner and the school was vetted internally. We went through everything that was provided. We looked at all the information that was submitted with respect to concerns, potentially with the qualifications or the responsiveness of the bidder. And it was the architect's recommendation, and certainly from everything I saw, that they had no reason to, you know, disqualify or cause any issue with Steubner or their ability. We got the, they responded to all the questions. We checked them out. And so they were the lowest responsive and responsible bidder. And certainly, we've structured it in a way that it'll be a not-to-exceed based upon the contract price. But certainly, again, you'll approve anything over and above what's in the contract, so.
Yeah, as far as any change orders, we've got a little difference here between us and the school district is, it's a brand-new structure. Whereas the school districts, you know, they were adding and rehabbing and, you know, you never know when you're going to, what you run into when you're doing that and so forth. So, and I am familiar with this company. They are quite qualified to do the work for us. And I've also had Mr. Ren, who sits on our authority, you know, review this and so forth. And Mr. Ren's background before he retired was, he built and was in charge of many, many schools. And Steubner was one of the contractor on a couple of the buildings. And he said that we'd have no issue with moving forward with them. Any questions? All right, so Monday evening, this will be listed for...
I have a question.
Yes.
From what I understand, we had a certain amount of money put aside for this in this loan or whatever it was that it was. And how's that going to work financially? I didn't...
Janice?
We have the funds available. The loan is sitting there. It's a construction drawdown loan. So we have not drawn on the loan yet. So everything that we have available to us will cover the cost of the building for the low bidder. We will not need any new borrowing.
Number 10, chemical bid awards.
You have a bid tab before you for water plant chemicals, three separate chemicals, activated carbon, or roughly phosphate and green, Clean Pro. Three separate bidders. The activated carbon, recommend Univar, that's the low bidder. Shannon Chemical on the phosphate and Univar again on the green Clean Pro.
It's always a fun time of the year to read these chemicals off.
I think you should invite Mr. Gibson.
Okay, any questions on these chemicals and who gets what? So that'll be listed for Monday evening. Diesel fuel bid, same thing.
Doug, do you want to comment on the, or Erica, on the diesel fuel bid?
Oh, sure. We had the bus diesel fuel for the park transit system put out. And we had been using automotive services for a number of years. They are actually the lowest bidder. And we have a very good relationship with them. They're responsible. So we would recommend at this time, a three-year contract with automotive service to continue.
So this will be for three years?
Correct.
And now, the price, the price will fluctuate or it'll hold for that price for the three years?
We have the price here. I don't know if you want to touch on that, the fluctuation.
With the, to establish a baseline on this, there's, there's a couple publications. There's Opus, there's Journal. And those publications publish on a daily basis what the price is for fuel. So we specified a given date, so everybody was marking up based on the same number. What you're seeing there is actually the markup for the fuel on a per-gallon basis. So it's .175 is what we would pay above that daily focus price or journal price. But you can see the unit price is less all taxes. So that's why that number is starting out so good is because there's no taxes involved. I mean, either you have to play it with escalators or, in this case, we just bid the markup and that's what the markup a gallon at.
Okay, everyone understand that?
Okay, very good. That's worked very well, actually.
Okay, sanitary sewer ordinance.
This is actually something we discussed a number of months ago. This came out of a recommendation of the Borough Authority. The Authority actually adopted resolutions that addressed the charges for both sanitary sewer and water when water service is terminated or disconnected from a property, so that it was clear what had to be paid and what the Authority could charge for both water and sewer. And when we looked at the language, we found that while the Authority had done the resolutions, the language had never really made it in the Borough Ordinance. So what we did was worked with the Authority, took their language, and now incorporated both into the water and sewer ordinance as far as what, what you can be charged, as far as the fees when the water service is terminated or disconnected. So that's really what you see here. And again, you're amending two sections, sewers and sewage disposal section with respect to charging for sewer rates. And then Chapter 26, I believe, which is the water, Chapter 26 is water for the water rates. And again, the charges are based upon if in fact you have actual service to the property. Seems to make sense. So we're hoping that you would approve these changes by ordinance.
And then, and then the shut-off at, the shut-off by the borough is based on EDU? So if it's a commercial property, it's more to buy back a EDU if it's...
Yes, that's correct. The process that is contemplated is that if, if the property is actually not just shut off, but physically disconnected...
Disconnected, yes.
At that point, then, if you wanted to resume service at some point, you're actually buying the number of EDUs back. So then you've lost your capital investment and you have to buy it back. So it kind of bifurcates it. If it's shut off, you pay one thing. If it's disconnected, you pay less, but you have to buy back the EDU.
Right.
Any questions? It might sound confusing, but...
So it's eliminating the disparity between two different options with the same net?
Yes, and it's basically clarifying it for both sewer and water. And I guess the Authority realized the issue, I guess, at one point when they had a litigation matter and wanted to make sure that the ordinance and their resolutions were crystal clear as to what could be charged under what circumstances. So now, this will line everything up, Borough and Authority, and the language, we believe, is clear. So there's no confusion or allegations of ambiguity in the, in the language.
And although it has the same outcome, I mean, it was, it was good to know because I actually had a property owner that has a vacant property that's for sale. And the question was, you know, could they, could they terminate the service and then, in that event, pass the cost to buy back the EDU onto the sale of the property, which they could potentially do if the buyer agreed to that. So it, it could be a good option for somebody who has a vacant property and it is for sale, if it's agreeable by the borough, because it has to be authorized.
Correct. The Authority has that, has that discretion to allow the disconnect. And again, under normal circumstances, as long as that property is habitable and improved, couldn't imagine why you'd want to disconnect service.
I wouldn't recommend it.
I was going to say. And again, I don't know why the Authority would recommend that if it's a viable property. If it was a vacant lot or the property was torn down, maybe that'd be one thing. But again, that'll be a case-by-case basis the Authority has to make. But now, it makes clear what can be charged under what circumstances.
The disconnect, Doug, I mean, they'd have to dig up and actually plug the lateral or...
Usually it's going to be on a demolition. So on a demolition and there's no intent of building a building back now, sometimes if they're going to demolish a property and put a house back on or something like that, we'll save the EDU because there's going to be building for a demolition lot. So in that case, they can just reuse it. But if they're going to tear it down and it's going to become a vacant lot, then they have to unhook it from the main. The water has to be unhooked at the core, which is on fast into the main. And then the sewer has to be disconnected from the main. Otherwise, we run into leaving all these stubs out there. The clay, whatever that ladder was made out of, ends up taking in groundwater, roots get into it and then adds to our I and I problems. And on the other side, the water service, because nobody's using it now, no one knows when it starts leaking. So now we got a leak going on. So we're losing on both ends depending on how things go. So...
A good example would be Frederick's Brothers that was...
Right, that. And we've had some others where the service was never totally disconnected. And we had one down the east end of town where it actually looked like a little stream coming out of an arch. And here it was being fed by the water and it went on for years.
And just so we're clear, none of this is really changing those requirements that have to do. This is just saying what types of charges you have to pay if you're severed, disconnected, or just turned off. And now it's supposedly the same for both water and sewer.
So Monday, we'll just be voting to advertise or...
No, the ordinance is prepared and been advertised. You actually asked me to do that a few months ago and it took longer than I thought.
Okay. So it will be listed to... So it will be listed for Monday evening, yes. All right, number 13, a 2015 delinquent real estate tax collection. Turn this over to Borough Manager.
As some of you may recall, I believe it was two years ago, we went with the county to collect, I believe it was northeast, Janice? Through the county to collect delinquent real estate taxes. Since we made that move each year, it's been revisited at this time to make a decision as to whether we are gonna stay with the county collecting the delinquent real estate taxes or move to another entity such as Portnoy that we use for the utilities collection. Staff has discussed this. I believe Mr. Wynn has been discussing finance. And we are all in agreement that we should stay with the county and would recommend that the Borough, again, for 2015, utilize Northeastern through the county for the collection of delinquent real estate taxes.
Indeed.
Because there's still those additional fees. We still have to pay the county fees as before if we would go with our own tax collector, correct?
Chuck, do you wanna?
No, the 5% passes through.
No, that changed.
That changed, okay.
Yeah. The change, I guess, in the case law that now says that you don't have to pay. You could go with a third party and not pay any connection to the county.
Are they advertising a collection rate?
Are they...
Is there a collection rate that they're putting out there? Is it like 93% or whatever their collection rate is?
No, they haven't.
They haven't put anything out?
No.
What are we basing our recommendation on if they haven't reported any results, collection results?
Well, a couple of the items, you know, one, they've done a fairly decent job for us and so forth. And, you know, it's always good to, you know, have a good relationship with the county as far as with, you know, it keeps the door open and so forth with what they're doing. And...
Well, initially, they had that advantage that they could pass through the fee.
Right.
And we've been happy with the county as far as they're working so forth and what they've been doing. There's been no issues.
I was just curious, like, how do we know what the, how do we know what the collection rate is? You say they're doing good.
We don't have that information for this year yet.
Okay, but it does.
In the past, it has been very satisfactory.
And it's a year-to-year agreement, so... Okay, that will be listed for Monday evening. Number 14, Recycling Performance Grant, Huff Associates.
As many of you know, each year Huff Associates makes a proposal to the Borough and it has been welcomed each year. And the contract has been signed where Huff Associates handles our recycling grant. This year, the DEP, they have discovered through DEP that they can forecast out three years. The plan is sustainable for the next three years. And therefore, Huff Associates has offered to us a three-year agreement for the purpose of doing our recycling grant. And it would be for the cost of $4,000, excuse me, $8,000 total for the total of the three years. Huff Associates has been very successful each year in getting us a substantial return on our recycling investment.
Now, last year, Janice, was like $174,000 or something like that, wasn't it?
Yeah, I was gonna say, we just got it, so...
The 2013 was around $60,000.
Yeah. But it was really what I...
I wanna say it was 65, it just came in.
But it had gone up considerably, I think, the last year.
Yeah.
One other thing, my only question would be is with the three-year agreement locked in with them, if the 904 grant disappears, are we locked in to pay them even if it's not existed?
I haven't seen the agreement, so I don't want to comment. But I would think it's only based upon what they get for us.
Yeah, because they do all the data collection, which is the, that's the basis for it.
Well, I understand that, but if that grant would disappear, because there's been talk in the past that it might disappear, and if that would...
The recommendation to go to the three-year from them is based upon the fact that DEP has assured them that the 904 program will be solvent through 2020.
Okay.
After 2020, they make no promises.
I'd still like to see if we have somewhere we could have a contingency in there if it disappears. I mean, we got a new regime in there. Who knows what's gonna happen, so...
So it's $8,000 a year for three years, which is $24,000, but we're getting back $60,000 to $65,000.
No, it's $8,000 for the three years.
No, it says per year. It says fixed price of $8,000 per year.
Yeah, I apologize. You're correct.
But we...
But we're getting back $65,000 a year.
Or, yeah, plus, yeah.
I think when we looked at the amount of effort that went into it, it was probably represented 800 to 1,000 hours of effort. Huff has got a tremendous system down, so never you automated it, very efficient.
And this has to do not with our recycling, but with individuals like businesses and so forth as far as their reporting. And he does all that, all that work, the mails and so forth, and the compiling of the data. Okay, that'll be listed for Monday. Padita, holiday parking requests. Sheila, she was here?
She's here.
Oh, she is. You're sitting in a different sign. Any comments on this? Everyone has seen the request and so forth. Anything you want to comment on, Sheila?
Just that the whole purpose behind having the free parking in the downtown for the holidays is we're trying to entice people to come into town. And I know that in other towns, they've done this and people really appreciate it. Parking isn't always a favorite thing. It is something certainly we support as a borough and things that need to happen. But during the couple of Saturdays that we're having these big events, we think it would just be a very goodwill thing for people to be able to come down and not have to worry if they're parked right or getting a ticket or how to use the kiosk and things like that. So that's what we're hoping for.
Any questions? Okay, that'll be listed for Monday evening. Zoney, 81 South Charlotte Street.
Sure, this is an application for a variance or interpretation from the decision of the zoning officer. The property is 81 South Charlotte Street. And the applicant is proposing a number of direct retail sales items, many of which were approved by the zoning officer. But the one that's the subject matter of the appeal was the direct retail sales of restored classic automobiles. In this case, the applicant was proposing to sell restored classic automobiles, but also inventory a large number of the cars inside the building. The zoning officer did not feel that that was a permitted use in the downtown Gateway zoning district. And the applicant has requested a variance or interpretation through the zoning hearing board. So that'd be listed, I believe, for later this month.
Whose board is this? Any recommendation to just deny?
Well, I'm...
Favor or just let it move through?
Actually, I prefer to favor because, you know, as far as the cars being stored, you really can't see them. There's corrugated metal throughout the building if that's gonna be an aesthetic issue. Wish them luck.
So you would like to have it listed as sending a letter of support?
Support.
Okay. That will be done. Any other questions on that? Okay, Family Dollar Store Land Development Plan, 90-day extension.
Yeah, the applicant continues to ask for extension of the plan approval of the Family Dollar. And the only outstanding item is still the PennDOT permit. So I think they're getting that permit issued anytime. And so they're asking for another 90 days and hopefully it'll be the last time.
I hope DEP assurances are better than PennDOT assurances.
I was gonna mention that when we said we had a promise, but we'll see what we can do on that.
Don't they realize Nordstrom wants to come in there?
I've had our attorney contact their attorney to try and see if they can seek some help from either representatives or state...
Senators.
Yeah, state senators that may sit on the transportation board. So we'll see what they, we can do. Okay, we got vacant positions coming up. EAC, we have a one-three-year term expires August 10th. Jim, please, is that... Is that Ryan's? Daniel Mensch?
That's... Yes, that was Dan Mensch's, yes.
Okay. And he has not mentioned about re-upping? Okay, so you have a vacancy. Any recommendations for anyone?
I have not gotten a good recommendation for appointment at this point.
Okay.
I had somebody, and unfortunately, his employer situation sort of changed, that it was not gonna work out well, so...
Okay, so unless council has somebody to recommend, we'll just leave it vacant until recommended, because you can still operate your board minus one member, correct?
We've done pretty well with four more reliable members than more or less reliable.
Okay, HARP, we have two that are up. One, I guess both are five-year, runs for 2018 and one's for 2019. We have two resignations. Is there any recommendations or has anyone come forward for those? One was a Realtor and the other one was Mr. Woof has resigned.
So we still need a Realtor?
We need one Realtor and one could be an at-large member. Have to live in Potsdam.
Can the board currently continue to operate without a Realtor on the board?
Yeah, as long as there's a quorum.
Yeah, because they're just basically a recommending board anyway to us, so that's...
They went for a while without a Realtor before this one, didn't they?
I just thought that was one of the requirements, that's why I was curious.
It is a requirement, but they can still run as a quorum.
Okay. If anyone's interested, let our secretary know. Okay, HARP, 455 King Street. Any questions on this one? Approval for replacement aluminum siding on the Washington Street side of the building within Kind vinyl, so that's been approved by HARP. And then the others are all administratively approved. And that's all these following addresses. 272 Walnut, 250 Walnut, 254 Walnut, 935 East High Street, 643 East High Street, and 911 913 High Street, and 157 North Hannover.
935 East High Street. I'm just curious, what does a four-foot-high black aluminum fence look like? Is it posts? Is it like an iron? Is it... Do you have any photos of what it would... The iron posts?
It's probably square bolsters.
Yeah, it's not...
Okay, any other items of the HARP issues? Okay, so that will be listed. All right, we're up to the budget presentation, Janice.
So here we are. 2015 budget presentation. And this is way tinier than I pictured it to be. What I'm trying to show here is the decline in the assessment, which I probably don't have to tell everybody is aware of. Again, in 2014, we've had petitions to have the assessments lowered and it has affected $32,000 in real estate tax revenue for the general fund. Our assessments are way back to where they were in the 19, late 1999, 1998. But even though we, our assessments are that low, we started out the budget this year, I think we were off, $1.3 million was what we started at. Worked our way down, looked at areas where we could conserve, cut back a little. This is still showing where the assessments are. And we are... This is showing balanced revenues and expenses for 2015. We're presenting you a zero-tax-increase budget tonight. Even though costs have risen and you can see the amounts that the budget has increased over the years, we are able to still provide the same services, not cutting to the residents. Explaining some of the highlights for the general fund. The revenues have slightly increased. The earned income is up a little bit. We have a lot of real estate transfer tax activity. Must be refinancing because there is a lot of activity of properties coming and going. The Comcast Cable Commission revenue, we get 5% of their, they've projected higher revenue from last year, so we had a nice increase there. And then along with the licensing and inspection department. And their building permits and business licenses and hopefully our new rental ordinance inspection will generate the revenues that Keith expects them to. Our expenses, we've tried to keep them to a minimum. We have a few new efficiencies. We're going to outsource the utility bills. It gives us a much better postage cost. We've streamlined a lot of the processes throughout the Borough, not just in finance, but in licensing and public works. And the building permits and business licenses, when we go to build them out, they're going to be in a bulk mail system also. It'll be the first of the year, once we get the ordinance passed. We touched a little bit, I was asked about the Borough Garage and the construction. So I put together a little timeline so that you could see. The land was acquired at the end of 2013. That was the first small draw that we made on the construction loan. The architectural design was completed during this summer. The permits were done and it was out to bid. And I believe that's one of the things you discussed. Acceptance of the bid will trigger the shovel to the dirt and hopefully completed by the fall. And we do have the amounts from the construction loan and some discussions with the Authority that hopefully they will have to share in the cost. One of the things that we started in 2013 was addressing the other post-employment benefits for the uniformed officers. I believe the council that was here then agreed that we were gonna put $250,000 away each year. Even though the liability is daunting at $24 million, it's, if we don't address it, it's a continued finding from the auditors each year. So this is the third, in 2015, it's the third year that we're presenting another $250,000 payment will be made.
This was also a recommendation with the EIP, the Early Intervention Program, that we had to, you know, start taking care of business. And, you know, that was one of the findings.
So if anybody has any questions, go on, stop me. Glad to answer anything. This is just a little overview of what your budget, what the services are that we provide. It's approximately 71 miles of roadways, 24 miles of alleys, a lot of storm inlets, traffic signals, three miles of paved roads. It's where a lot of the public works dollars goes to. We have an inventory of the Borough vehicles. There are a couple that we sold... There are a couple that we sold recently, and we have a good capital plan that is going to help us to sustain our turnover, our inventory. I think last year we forgot to list the fire trucks. Rich Langley asked me about the fire trucks. We made sure we added them in. In the park and rec department, the mini-golf was very successful this year. I had done a spreadsheet for Mike showing what the costs were relative to one-time costs and what the operating costs, and it was very encouraging. I believe in 2015, it'll, we'll do a lot better. So there's continued operations of the mini-golf, future development of the T-Rac program. There's a couple little small parks that are going to be improved, along with, they're going to be involved with us on the Bicentennial Committee in different activities for 2015. Fund seven is the parking lots. We finished one parking kiosk already, and the 2015 budget has two more, plus improved signage, I guess directional signage, towards the parking lots.
Where are the new kiosks going to be going? What lots?
Well, the next one will be the roadie lot. This is the next type of huge lot, and then we'll go to one of the other lots and see which one has a better return on. So far, the kiosk is, we see it well, and it notifies us when it doesn't have an issue or a problem, tickets or whatever, so.
Well, I saw the new rates are being recognized on there now.
Right, they're in there now. We have a program change. Now, we expanded the program too now, so that if we go up 10 cents, 20 cents, whatever, there's a whole range of new tariffs, they call them, so the next time it'll just be a matter of selecting which one we want.
And both of the parking kiosks will come out of the reserves of the parking fund. The airport, as Erica touched on, we should have the completion of the runway and the rehab safety project. We met the new Theo here earlier. He has a lot of new and exciting ideas moving us forward. Here's a little aerial view of the Manitoni Green. We should have gotten that Halloween, it had orange water. Here are the little list of the pocket parks and a couple pictures. Takes a lot to maintain them. That's where your parking lot dollars go. And then we're going to propose, this is something that Mark and Erica really spearheaded along with some of my ideas, plan for the future capital expenditures. So we've created a draft policy, I believe it went around a couple times, to get some input to shift capital expenses to their own fund. We've proposed the policy just to sustain the reserves, so that it will put aside a certain amount to seed it, and then each year will have limited amounts to spend, and it will keep funding itself. It's going to reestablish the state of the borough fleet status. That will make Terry Jones very happy. The two items left for council to consider. Mark, if you want to do it.
Yeah, the, I believe Ginny disseminated, as this process started, a document which is the policy that the Finance Committee has vetted in regard to the capital fund. It's our recommendation that in years past, since I've been doing budgets in the Police Department on, capital has been carried in the operating budget, which makes no sense to me. So it's our recommendation, we all agree, that the smart thing to do is start planning for the future. We're in the middle of developing a five, 10-year budget process. It makes sense to put the capital onto a plan so that we know what we are going to expend from year to year, we know what our limits are, and we also can plan for future major purchases, so we don't have to fund them. The authority has been very successful at doing this with their capital plan, so we know that it works. With that said, the policy is one thing that along with the budget, we're going to ask council to adopt this policy at Monday night's meeting. The policy would provide, seed the fund from reserves, and then it would put annual spending limits for each of the three categories, building maintenance, parks and recreation, and general fund acquisitions, or Fund One acquisitions, if you will. The limits can obviously be overridden by council at any time, and you notice the last bullet item on Janice's overhead there is that as we move into 2015, the Parks and Recreation is in dire need of a vehicle for replacement, and it is their desire to acquire a vehicle, which is going to take that fund, $18,096, around, was it 8,000?
It's going to be roughly 19,000.
19, right around 19,000 above the spending limit. That'll be a one-time occurrence, and moving forward, I suspect that Parks and Rec is going to be set for quite a while. The other overage we're going to ask you to consider is in the Fund One. It's actually in the police licensing inspections and public works capital items, which comes to a total of around $39,000 over the $300,000 expenditure for the year. In doing that, we will bring the entire borough fleet of vehicles into the rotation that had been established years ago for fleet maintenance, and at that point, we are going to seriously reduce some maintenance costs going into 2015. Another document that I believe you were handed is the, the budget that you reviewed showed the Fund 31 balances, but didn't itemize out for you what the Fund 31 acquisitions were. That document that you were handed is the proposed, are the proposed expenditures from the capital fund for 2015. So with that said, three items in addition to the budget, adoption of the policy, and requesting permission to override the two limits, one on the Fund One and one on the Parks and Rec Fund.
We've come a long way since when I first started, in that we weren't able to buy very many of the capital things we needed each year, and now we're finally to the point where we can get back on track. And this is just an overview of what the budget for 2015 would look like, as you see the different funds and then the total at the bottom. So the tax generating ones are the general fund, the street light, the park and rec, the library, and then the fire and the debt service. There's five over there. And there is our 0% increase, and what you'll notice, the new 2015 rates are on the right. We shifted a little bit of millage from the debt service as we are slowly paying off the 2009 lease acquisition, and shifted up to the general fund. And then just a few to show where the school, the county, and the borough and the pie, the proportions. And that is the end. Be very happy to answer any questions.
Questions?
Part of when we took the loan in 2012 for the construction of the borough garage was we paid this building off. And when we did that, we had, this building's original loan was real small payments for the first 10 or 12 years, and huge payment at the end. It was $675,000 a year. So of course, the debt service millage was increased to cover that. When we paid this building off, we were able to ship some over as we pay off the lease that was done in 2009 when I first started here. We don't need that, so we can ship that over.
Taking money out of the operating budget and applying it to specific funds so that you're prepared for expenses within that category means that money stays in that category and it can't be moved back out again, correct?
That's the intention. That is the intention, yes.
Counsel could always override that, but it's...
The intent is to leave it in place and allow the capital fund to grow, so that we can avoid, in the future, one, avoid having a fleet that deteriorates to the point that we're, in some cases, epoxying it together so that it works. And secondly, to be prepared for that time when we have a major acquisition, that typically we would have to take a loan out for, that we can say, we have the money, let's do it. There's no bond issue, there's no loan. It just makes sense to plan for the future.
Part of that's to maintain our house that we're in here. We really haven't done a whole lot for it. We're here more than 14 years, so we need to be thinking about keeping it up to where it needs to be.
So savings for the future.
I have a question you probably can't answer, but the real estate transfers, I question whether it's refinance or investment properties turning over in the borough from homeowners to investment rental properties.
Well, when I hear, I see what goes on in the department and here my staff, it's a pretty good mix of both of them. It really is. We're very busy doing certs constantly.
Have you heard any predictions as to the assessments for next year or the near future? Does it plan to, you still see, foresee a downturn in assessments, something like that?
It's hard to say. It really is. We're keeping watch with the school on bigger ones, you know, to try, Chuck is working a lot closer with the school, trying to, you know, intervene if they don't want to lose them.
I kind of sort of jump on that, if I could. Not so much questions for Janice, but just some comments. I want to really thank Dan as Chair of the Finance Committee and, you know, Steve as a member of the Finance Committee for the leadership that they've shown in setting the direction for the staff to come up with this budget, and certainly thank Mark and Erica and Janice and all that were involved. You know, we kind of, I think, from the day after we passed last year's budget, let it be known that we wanted to cut out every bit of waste that we could and come back with a very fiscally responsible budget. And I think, you know, with the understanding that sometimes economics are beyond our control, but our instructions were, we want to see a zero, zero tax increase budget. And I know that you guys worked incredibly hard, crunched a lot of numbers, and squeezed a lot of rocks, and I appreciate the efforts. I'm very pleased with where we're at, and hopefully, as an answer to your question, you know, we've been asked periodically by, you know, just members of the public that have come in for what our vision is of the borough. And, you know, I think it's hard, because, you know, we have seven different councils up here. We probably all have different small variations, but I think in general, we all share the same vision of the borough, because we all live here. And that is to make Pottstown the kind of small town that people, families, and businesses want to come to. The way we get our assessments to stop declining and start rising is to make the borough that kind of borough. I think a very good step in that direction is a borough that is fiscally sound, fiscally responsible, and does everything they can to keep taxes as low as possible. So I think this is a step in the direction of accomplishing what I think you're getting at, stopping the decline in the assessments and starting to get our property values to increase again. So I thank you, staff, Steve, Dan, great job.
Yeah, I want to echo that also, and, you know, Mark's been in charge for three years, and out of the three years, we've had two zero tax increases along with our current staff that, you know, we have. I mean, we've got a great bunch of people that are working, you know, here in the borough that are looking, and I agree, if taxes don't go up, people don't get their property reassessed, because they try to even them out, you know? So if taxes stay zero, we're hoping that the assessments, you know, will hold also. I mean, holding equal, I'd be happy with not losing at this point. I'll worry, you know, we worry about that down the road when, you know, as far as the property values and assessment going up, but we can hold static. I mean, that's, you know, a real good thing. And, you know, along with a zero budget, we're maintaining and increasing reserves as to where they should be. We're not there yet, but we're getting there. And, you know, to think we have a declining assess, in our town, revenues are up a little bit, but it's a matter of streamlining and, you know, one good thing, I think our health benefits didn't go up like we thought they would, so they maintain, and I'm hearing that's going across the United States, health benefits are either, you know, you're not getting the double-digit increases like we've had in the past. So I thank staff for the good job, and council. I mean, certainly, you know, all of us, you know, that are sitting on council, we're the stewards of the finances and so forth, along with our borough staff, so thank you very much for that.
Yeah, it's important to note, I appreciate the words, but it's important to note that it's really the fact that staff has done an incredible job. You have Rick sitting here, you have Doug sitting here, Janice is sitting here. They've done an incredible job at managing their departmental budgets and at the same time, streamlining operations and finding cost savings. And I think as we go forward with a capital plan, a capital purchasing plan, if you will, or a future savings plan, whatever you want to call it, and forecast out the budgets for years to come, perhaps, as Mr. Gary has pointed out, we're at a point where hopefully, things go in the direction we want them to go. Again, thank you.
Any other comments?
Well, you took most of my steam. That's normally when I get to say thanks to everybody, and I really do want to do that. Travis, you're right, we started right after the budget last year, and said we want a zero target for this year, and actually, staff exceeded what we expected, because we've now created these reserve situations that, you know, when it comes time for that yacht or airplane or trip to Europe, we can afford it. Pottstown will be able to afford what we need in the future.
For an arch falling.
Yeah. That's the rainy day fun. But, yeah, I would say probably state and federal wish they could do so well, as well as a lot of businesses. Janice, your team, you've been remarkable in five years, and we really thank you. So that in itself should make the town more attractive to those...
I mean, as you always point out too, Dan, our rating has gone up too.
Yeah. When we came in, we had zero, a zero bond rating, and in your absence, we were informed by your staff that we now have a double-A rating, so thank you so much.
And I did forget to mention that, probably most of you remember, but any of the new ones, that after, if the budget gets approved Monday night, then it gets advertised for the 10 days, and then we're able to be official. We won't need an extra meeting.
We're actually finished early.
So basically, what we will be voting on Monday night is approval to advertise, and then we will be adopting in December.
Interestingly too, I know typically, somebody along the way is going to ask the question, what's our insurance percentage increase for 2015? You can find it hard to believe, but we're at 4%.
That's great.
Yeah.
Well, it would normally be at this time that I would say that Finance Committee recommends that it be approved Monday night. We're happy with the presentation you gave. Definitely in favor of the capital budget policy, and also these exceptions that you'd like for 2015, I would hope that that would pass Monday night as well.
Anything, Chuck, you want to add?
No.
Okay. Any other council's comments? Okay, we will be going on now to comments from citizens present. Diane, I think you're the only one, so.
I would like to send counsel through and all the employees to the hard work to keeping that budget to zero. With the senior citizens not getting much of a raise this year, we really need a raise. I was wondering whether with you redoing the Rental Ordinance Amendment, I don't even know if this is legal, whether when you do the inspections, if that landlord is backed up with their real estate taxes, whether you can penalize them and charge them an extra dollar now, give them an incentive to keep up with their taxes. Because the last time I looked, there were a lot of investors that had land, that had property that were behind. And I know that you're very hard trying to collect it, but that may be an incentive if you can, now you deal with real estate, so you might be able to tell me whether you can penalize them. I have a couple orders here.
He's dealing with real estate.
But it's just a suggestion, as I said. I know that eventually we'll hopefully get the better landlord program in, and that will show you, but the thought that these landlords come in and collect rent and collect rent and collect rent, especially from the government that has no way of stopping the payments, and yet they're not paying their taxes, and I see that on the show of sales. So if you could consider that as maybe an amendment, it's legal.
We'll have our solicitor look into it.
Okay, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, council's general discussion. Counsel Kirkland?
I just wanted to put in my few cents as far as thanking council and staff as far as the budget goes. I agree with Dan, you know, over the past five years, you know, if you look at our record of the past five years, the council and staff, we've been very responsible, you know, with the finances. We have municipalities all around us who steadily raising taxes, but we're being really responsible and keeping it, keeping it under control. I want to thank everybody for doing that. And that's it.
Counsel Gary?
Thank you. If I could, if you'll indulge me for a moment for our history lesson for today, I'd like to read a little bit off the Department of Veterans Affairs Office of Public and Intergovernmental Affairs website. World War I, known at the time as the Great War, officially ended when the Treaty of Versailles was signed on June twenty-eighth, nineteen nineteen, in the Palace of Versailles outside the town of Versailles, France. However, fighting ceased seven months earlier when an armistice or temporary cessation of hostilities between the Allied nations and Germany went into effect on the eleventh hour of the eleventh day of the eleventh month. For that reason, November eleventh, nineteen eighteen, is generally regarded as the end of the war to end all wars. In November nineteen nineteen, President Wilson proclaimed November eleventh as the first commemoration of Armistice Day with the following words, "To us in America, the reflections of Armistice Day will be filled with solemn pride in the heroism of those who died in the country's service and with gratitude for the victory, both because of the thing from which it has freed us and because of the opportunity it has given America to show her sympathy with peace and justice in the councils of the nations." The original concept for the celebration was a day observed with parades and public meetings and a brief suspension of business beginning at eleven AM. An Act approved May thirteenth, nineteen thirty-eight made the eleventh of November in each year a legal holiday, a day to be dedicated to the cause of world peace and to be thereafter celebrated and known as Armistice Day. Armistice Day was primarily a day set aside to honor veterans of World War I, but in nineteen fifty-four, after World War II had required the greatest mobilization of soldiers, sailors, marines, and airmen in the nation's history, after American forces fought aggression in Korea, the eighty-third Congress, at the urging of the veterans' service organizations, amended the Act of nineteen thirty-eight by striking out the word "armistice" and inserting in its place the word "veterans." With the approval of this legislation on June first, nineteen fifty-four, November eleventh became a day to honor American veterans of all wars. So as we head into November eleventh this year, please take the time to remember our veterans, certainly those who have given the ultimate sacrifice, those that are serving today in harm's way and those that will, that are preparing to serve tomorrow in harm's way. So to all, happy but a solemn Veterans' Day.
Thank you very much for those words. Counsel Wean?
Said it all.
Counsel Proxell?
Of course, I'd like to thank staff for their hard work with the budget as well. And I received a little certificate of appreciation for keeping my yard clean on Pottstown, so I'd like to thank the borough for that as well.
Gee, I didn't get one.
Me neither, and I've been doing it for twenty-six years.
Counsel Coe?
Yeah, I want to thank the Finance Committee for doing such a good job. It's often people come to you and complain, you know, about taxes and things like that. And I often say to them, do you realize how, what kind of good financial shape Pottstown really is? Pottstown's in really good financial shape and people don't realize that compared to areas around, and I think that's something to be real proud of.
Counsel Miller?
I have a couple. I also commend the borough for the zero percent tax increase. I remember last year when I was sitting on the other side and stomping my foot and crossing my fingers and saying, get it to zero, get it to zero. And I also want our town to become, once again, the quaint little town that it was, and I think that we can achieve that. I feel that we are at a crucial time with declining property values and should be investing more in our codes, our property maintenance, and our police, not asking these departments to do with less and still achieve the monumental task of turning the borough around. Someone recently told me that I didn't understand the budget process, but that's certainly not true. I run a household, I have revenue and expenses, I have capital expenses and other expenses. In recent years, my revenue has either remained stagnant or decreased while expenses continue to increase, and I still manage to successfully maintain a balanced budget without reducing needed services to members of my household. Rather, I continue to make sacrifices of even the smallest of extravagances. So it's not that I don't feel that borough residents deserve a zero percent tax increase, I do. I think they deserve a zero percent tax increase with more services. On that note, just as a reminder to borough property investment, Pottstown Borough Investment Property Owners, if the grass and the weeds and the shrubs grow and the winds blow at your beautifully manicured property where you reside, please remember the same conditions apply to the Borough of Pottstown Properties. I'd like to express my gratitude to Representative Mark Painter for his interest, involvement, and help in the Pottstown community. Representative Painter was not just a politician, he is a true, genuine, caring person. I am deeply saddened and feel his election loss is a great loss to the Borough of Pottstown. And then lastly, but not leastly, I read the momentum and I follow the Pottstown area industrial development and the Pottstown downtown improvement as each one talks about new or upcoming businesses and opportunities in the borough and tells the same story again and again to build momentum. I am very happy and grateful to have those businesses and opportunities, but as I visit the good people I know that have existing businesses and some for many years asking for help, and most recently Bill Ludi at Riverside Beverage who lost an average of thirteen thousand dollars a month over the summer months while the sewer work was being done, Hanover Street was closed for a portion, I can't help but wonder what we're doing to promote, market, and advertise for existing businesses. And, you know, the ones that are existing just to, struggling just to hang on, and what can we as a borough do better to be able to help those existing businesses?
You're looking for an answer?
Yes. I'm looking for an answer.
Certainly, they can, you know, any business can get in touch with, are paid to see what other opportunities are available for them. Same way with Shield, I guess there's grant monies available for facade upgrades and so forth.
Does that only apply though to downtown?
The Vidita.
Yeah, see, I'm talking about businesses that are throughout the borough.
There's always possibilities of grant monies, I mean, get in touch with the borough. Certainly, in the past, we've had big corporations such as Dana and the hospital and some of the others have contacted the borough to see, to get some innovative ideas and so forth.
Put them in touch with Paid or?
Well, they call the borough and then get in touch. Yeah, Eric, go.
Sure, and I agree with existing businesses, the last issue of momentum, I think these are whites and corns, but you're absolutely right, we need to thank them for the contribution that they continue to make, yeah, so.
And that's one of the reasons, I think, there at Riverside, I think we get that family dollar in place in there, you're going to see his business escalate.
Yeah, I'm sure, I'm sure he hopes that's the case as long as Penn dot appears.
We're working on that.
But just to piggyback on your issue with existing businesses, I actually had some business with the Total Rental, which is in the, in the Western Gate area, and they have, of course, experienced a crisis when the bridge was closed as far as traffic flow. But what the conversation culminated in was that, I said, well, is there anything that the borough can do to help you with your business? And, you know, just open up the dialogue. And they said basically that people know we're here, they know what we have, and if they need it, they come and get it. Same as with Whites and Corns, I mean, they've developed a niche for fine men's clothing. So if someone's not in the market for that or can't afford it, they're not going to shop there. And if they are, it's a premier destination without any motivation. That's why they've had a hundred and fifty years of success, because they found their niche and their customer base, and they parlay to their customer base. And I believe that that's part of, you know, having a business, even with the individuals who came to present the possibility of the funeral home, you know, they've done their due diligence and statistics and tried it in other areas, so they have a basis of understanding of what they're doing. So they're just trying a new market.
I guess on the basis of that reasoning, that we wouldn't advertise for new businesses or all the wonderful opportunities that we have up and coming here.
Well, no.
Because if they wish to.
I'm just saying, I'm just saying that, an experience that I've had in dealing with an existing business. But by the same token, there's a gravitation for a new business to find a niche. So they feel that they can find a niche here and they come and develop it. So they'll be bringing something that they feel they can sell for. And just like to say, great job for the zero percent budget and all the people will buy the mercury and smile.
That would every guy.
Does it? I'm sorry.
Just two things before we go into executive session. I'm going to give a little history lesson to Mr. Gary. I remember sitting in the seat where Mr. Wean is at, and I remember Jenny sitting there, and I remember Jack Wolf sitting here, probably maybe twelve years ago, and the budget was presented to us, and it was like a fourteen or fifteen percent increase. And Jack Wolf said, if you think we're going to approve this budget, you've got another thing coming. And that ended the budget session. Remember that? Well, have we grown and come a long way since then and so forth. And it's, there again too, you know, I've been fortunate to be a part of it and so forth, but I attribute most of it to getting good people on board here that know what they're doing and so forth. Because they came back with a budget that was down to four, five percent or three percent, but it was fictitious. You know, it wasn't true numbers. I mean, we've been digging out since then, you know? And it took...
Six years ago, it was quite a hole here.
Right. You know, and EIP was, you know, that was instrumental. When we did that and we got that, you know, through, through, I mean, and they came to us twice. First time they came, I thought it was a great idea and it didn't get any momentum. They came back to us and said, either use this money or you're going to lose it. And we decided, yeah, we're going to do this. And, you know, since then, we've been, you know, on, moving forward with it. Second thing is, it's a challenge to the school board. We have Mr. Williams sitting here, school director, and, you know, there's been some talk that they're going to try and go with a zero increase next year. We've done it, see what you guys can do for us, so, for the town, I should say.
Certainly.
All right, with that executive session, we have, what, four items personnel?
Four items.
No action.
No action.
We are adjourned.